Good morning, everyone, and happy Tuesday.
Good morning, Alyssa. I believe that we are ready to roll.
Awesome. We are ready to start on our own.
This conference will now be recorded. Good morning, all. We are opening our board meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, and we'll begin with introductions. I'm Zan Ojero, Benton County Commissioner and Chair.
I'm Pat Malone, Benton County Commissioner.
May I be asked, Benton County Commissioner?
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Cronin, County Council.
Alyssa Ash, Public Information Officer.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Kate Portia, Carvalho's Benton County Economic Development Office.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioners Staff.
Brian Lee, Municipal Administrator.
April Holland, Deputy Director of Public Health.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Gary Stockoff, Public Works.
Hunter Tuntul, CFO.
This is Bruce Thompson, Benton County Health Officer.
I see we have many people here from the Benton County Sheriff's Office as well joining us this morning. We will be discussing the appointment of an interim sheriff, but that will not be until the last item on our agenda, just so you all know. Might be a little while. Okay, and I'm assuming that, you know, you can open up the people box and see who all is online, but for our viewers out in the public, they cannot see who's in the room. So, in the interest of transparency, we do generally hope that people will introduce themselves as they listen in. I'd like to, right off the bat, welcome one of our newest employees, Joe Han, who has joined us. This is his first day today. He's our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. So, welcome, Joe.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ojero. Joe has just joined us, and he will be here with us this morning if there's been this meetings meeting. I'll always be joining you a handful of times across this week to sit in on your board meetings and meet Department Directors. So, thank you for that welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Lilia. Okay, I have one or two quick announcements, and then we'll welcome announcements from others. Welcoming Joe is one of them. I'd also like to acknowledge the celebration of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And it's a great celebration of King's vision of civil rights and economic justice, but it's also a recognition of all of the many, many, many women across the United States who protested alongside him for civil rights and for economic equity. So, this holiday really provides us an opportunity both to celebrate past civil rights victories and challenges, but it's also a moment to reflect on the work that we still need to do to address historic racial injustice to blacks, indigenous peoples, and all people of color, and highlights the work that we still need to do to dismantle systemic racism here in this country that we are so proud of. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that we're gathered in spirit and virtually on the traditional homelands of the Marys River or on Pinnifoo and Muddy Creek or Chinaflo bands of the Calipoya. After the conclusion of the Willamette Valley Treaty of 1855, the Calipoya people were forcibly removed to coast range reservations. Their leading descendants are still here with us as part of the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederate tribes of the Salits Indians. Are there any other announcements? Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will review and approve the agenda next. We would like to add an executive session at the end of our agenda today. And when that time comes, I will pass the baton to Vance Cronin, County Council.
And, uh...
And, uh... Whoops, sorry about that.
And Erica, we'll be going into exec session under ORS 192.6602E as an Edward. I'll repeat that again just before we go in, but just so that you have it, Erica.
Thank you, Vance.
I would like to approve the agenda with the addition of the executive session.
Second, all in favor signify with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the agenda is approved. Moving on into our work session, item 4.1, update from the Emergency Operations Center, and we will begin today with Brian Lee.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, a quick update on the EOC side. We are actually here conducting a very large planning meeting to work out logistics and operations for the large mass vaccination effort at the Berber State. And we are also focused on building out our structure for future weeks to come as we start planning for a swap of volunteers and larger vaccination efforts across the county in the report.
Are there questions for Brian? I suspect that Suzanne has further information and details as well. Okay, go ahead, Suzanne.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. I also have April Holland, the Director of Public Health, and Dr. Bruce Thompson, Benton County Health Officer, joining us today. We are prepared to give you an update on where we are with vaccination planning and administration of the county as part of the EOC.
My caller number four may answer you.
Yeah. I was just gonna say the same thing. Could all callers please mute their telephones or computers? We are getting someone's telephone conversation in the background. Please mute your phones and computers. Thank you. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Great. So, as Brian indicated, the EOC is activated at this point, and our primary focus has been both scheduling people into this week's Lynn County event, but also moving into planning Benton County location mass vaccination event in partnership with Samaritan Health System and OSU. I do want to emphasize that that partnership is critical, and it will be ongoing series of events. It is not a one-time event, but an ongoing series of events with Samaritan, OSU. And we'll have a lot more information on that this week, but the target date for launch is January 26th. And I think the EOC being activated was very good timing, not only in the development of our entire plan for the county as we hope that vaccine continues to increase in volume coming into Oregon and up, but also for the mass events, which although they will be located in Benton County, they will be open to Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties, which is, you know, all of the Samaritan Health System areas in our region. And Samaritan is actually promoting the vaccination that they're receiving in order to make the vaccination events available to all three counties. And I want to emphasize that Brian is doing outstanding job as is Sierra, pulling together the EOC. And one of the things that is really providing us at this critical time is a normalized decision-making and role clarity. That's really necessary for smooth execution and optimization of our resources. And I want to also invite April to talk a bit more about what our plan is going to entail, because aside from the critical meeting for large events, such as the one that we're planning to use OSU's Reacher Stadium for, we will still be reaching out to many other parts of the community with smaller events, and also, of course, working to get to folks who cannot leave their homes and come to a site. So, all that will be part of the plan, and I'd like to invite April to talk more about that. We're also prepared to share with you today, if this is where your area of interest lies, is kind of where we are in terms of the vaccine coming into Benton County, what we've administered today, and how that's going, not just us, but of course, our provider partners all over the county as well. And we'll be working on a list of what we believe we need in the way of resources. EOC is also assisting us to develop that. Dr. Thompson can talk with you a bit about the coordination that we're doing and information sharing. ...ongoing basis with our neighboring counties and with Samaritan, and how we are prioritizing vulnerable populations as we continue to work through that Phase 1A group. If you have any questions, I can try to take them now, or we can work through what April, Bruce, and Brian have to share, and then see what else you may want to cover. And of course, I want to leave time for Kate and Danielle if you'd like to hear from them as well.
I'll go ahead. Looking forward to hearing from April and from Bruce.
Okay. April, do you want to begin with how we're doing and what we're thinking about in terms of the scope of planning?
Absolutely. Hello, and good morning, everyone. Yes, so overall, planning at 30,000 feet looks a little like this. As you all know, on last Wednesday, we activated the EOC, and we gathered a robust team of great fingers from across the county and city. And following our guiding principles of equity and vulnerability, we subdivided, you know, into four groups, which will allow focus on many opportunities for people to get vaccinated. First is our mass vaccination clinics, the largest of which is the Reacher Clinic here in Benton County, which is scheduled to start next Tuesday. And of course, all is dependent, I've got to pepper it with disclaimers, all is dependent upon vaccine availability, of course. So, we activated on Wednesday, and we began discussions in earnest with Samaritan Health and Oregon State University for a mass vaccination clinic. And from Wednesday through Friday, subject matter experts from the three partners convened to establish roles. And as Brian mentioned, right now, subgroups and sub-subgroups are getting into the details, down to the number of Band-Aids that we need to have on site. So, we're really, really working on getting all of those, all the minutia worked out right now. We've got a matrix established to establish detail and prioritize clinical flow rules, responsibilities, and material and personnel needs. So, that's the first arm of four arms of our overall vaccine planning. The next would be our rural and other smaller clinics. Our team here has already secured verbal agreements to hold rural clinics in two locations, one in Monroe and one in Alcee. Details are in process, and the clinics won't be scheduled until we have adequate vaccine supply. We're thinking, based on the populations of these areas, that they be held for one to three days. Our next arm of planning has to do with mobile clinics. Our team has a steadfast commitment to ensure access for our most vulnerable residents. We're exploring mobile vaccination options to include small vaccination strike teams or tiger teams, or a mobile unit from Good Samaritan that may be available in February, engaging availability of various state resources. And then finally, the fourth, and not to be forgotten, arm of our vaccine planning is utilizing our existing resources. And that entails those enrolled COVID vaccine providers who can ultimately vaccinate their client populations. While these might come in 100 and 200 allocations at a time, those numbers will add up and ensure access to vaccines to all who want it. So, that's the overview of planning. I'd be happy to get into any details, and I'm not sure if Bruce, you'd like to share some numbers, or if I'd be happy to go into that as well.
April, when you refer to enrolled providers, are those specifically pharmacies or other clinics, or what does that mean?
Great question. It can be both. The state has opened, they have a process for people to qualify as enrolled vaccine providers. Many of our clinics here, as well as some local pharmacies, have enrolled as providers. And any size clinic or provider can be an enrolled provider, but they can only receive vaccine directly if they can take 100 doses at minimum at a time. So, in many cases, we can receive an allocation of vaccine here at Benton County Public Health and then allocate smaller distributions to those enrolled providers. But we may not give doses to those who are not enrolled.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. Dr. Thompson, do you have comments?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and colleagues. I hope you're staying well, staying healthy, staying safe in this pandemic year approaching year two. So, I have several things to, well, three things primarily to talk about. One is that Benton County has been involved with a ongoing tri-county COVID-19 planning committee that set up actually in March of last year. We continue to meet weekly with the three counties, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln, which encompasses the CCO population of Samaritans. And in addition, in the last month, we have formed a tri-county vaccine planning committee as well, primarily to identify gaps in the current planning that OHA has put forward. Our goal really is to identify gaps. So, we're interacting with the drivers, for instance, for rideshare, who are non-emergency medical transport people. We're interacting with drivers for meals on wheels, and identifying other gaps as well, particularly in the IDBB group, which has now become a priority, first priority from OHA. So, that's what we've been doing as far as meetings go. Secondly, I wanted to just state that I reviewed the presentation that you had last week, the Board of Commissioners had last week, and just to say, you probably can round file that, because most of that's out the window. That plan was before we realized nationally that there is no reserve stockpile. And in fact, both Moderna and Pfizer each had been contracted to get 100 million doses. So, that's 200 million doses to the U.S. by the end of March. And as of this time, only 13.2 million doses total has been delivered to the U.S. And so, therefore, we see all kinds of discrepancies in a reliable vaccine supply. Thirdly, if you'd like, oh, I would like, and if there's time, I can give you just some numbers off of the state dashboard as of midnight this morning. So, these are hot off the virtual press, if you would like. So, I will proceed, hearing no objection. So, total 216,924 doses have been administered in the state of Oregon. 20,000 of those are second doses. The rest are all primary doses. As far as distribution, 124,405 have gone to females, and 66,196 have gone to males, most primarily representing the distribution of healthcare workers within Group 1 of OHA, Group 1. As far as age categories, from ages of 60 to greater than 80, primarily for long-term care facilities, skilled nursing facilities, and memory care, there have been 47,476 doses administered, and that program is actually a bit behind schedule. In the 20 to 60-year-old age group, again, the majority of our healthcare workers are 143,333 doses have been administered in the state. As far as county statistics go, the most recent numbers are in Lane, are surrounding counties in the Mid Valley region. Lane County has administered 341 per 10,000 doses, 10,000 population doses. Lynn County is at 345 per 10,000. Lincoln is at 374 per 10,000. Benton is at 473 per 10,000, again, likely representing the healthcare worker population. Pope is at 724 for 10,000. Marion is at 613 for 10,000. And the winner in the state so far is Wheeler County at 1,509 for 10,000 in their population of 1,438 people. That is all the report I have for you so far, and happy to entertain any questions along with the rest of our team.
May I just close that by letting you know that, like everyone else, we're working hard to get through Phase 1A, all the groups in that, so that we can, as soon as possible, move into that next very important priority of educators and individuals over 65. And OHA reached out to us last evening, and we responded this morning in looking for numbers in terms of how many doses we believe we would need in order to complete Phase 1A and move forward. It's very difficult to estimate how many people in Phase 1A we've actually vaccinated. The numbers that Dr. Thompson just provided are, as he would say, they're out of date the moment that we report them, because there's always a lag in reporting time. So, we know that more people have been vaccinated than what the numbers on the dashboard tell us. This is because somewhere between 24 and 72 hours is when a vaccinator can report. But we're doing our best in discussions with our partners and by our own testaments to determine what we need. And I think April reported to them this morning that we would need approximately 3,000 doses to complete Phase 1A. We don't know when, of course, that would be received, but we want to get in line. And one of the ways that we can, we believe we can increase our allotment is to show that we are ready to administer, both with knowing as close as we can our numbers, but also being ready with large events. And that's why one of our top priorities is getting ready for the event with Samaritan at OSU's Reacher Stadium. And as numbers become more reliable and more obtainable, we'll be happy to provide you regular updates on those.
Commissioner Malone?
Well, yeah, a couple things. One question. Very nice report, April. How long have you been on the job?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Malone. My one month on the job was marked on Friday. It's been a wild ride and a lot of fun, a lot of fast-moving parts.
Well, it sounds like you are completely engaged in the honeymoon period as in your rearview mirror, because there probably wasn't one. But my question is, physically, does the vaccine come into OHA or somebody like that and then get distributed in our area? Then Good Sam is the recipient, and then they distribute from there? Is that what the flow chart would look like?
Yeah, that's a great question, and there are a lot of moving parts, Commissioner. Many, at this point, the lion's share of the vaccine has gone from OHA directly to Good Samaritan. We, you know, we've got all this demand out there, but the truth is, is that Benton County Public Health Department has only received 400 doses to date. And those are all in arms already. With 370, we allocated out to those enrolled community providers, and 30 doses were administered by our vaccine coordinator. Other direct allocations that have happened so far include the Alcee Health Center received 100 doses, Corvallis Fire received 400, and the Corvallis Clinic received 100. So, outside of the hospital system, that's the sum of everything we've received so far. Now, you may have heard the news last week that we got pretty much a robin's egg for allocations this week for the hospitals. for, for the hospital, for, um, for any of the clinics for Benton County Health. Um, we were approached on Saturday, however, by the state to ask if we can utilize 1,000 doses of Moderna vaccine. And, uh, as long as we prioritize those doses to be used for intellectually and developmentally diverse population and, and other prioritized, um, folks. Um, we happily said yes and convened with Samaritan. Uh, we're going to, uh, utilize that vaccine to help run the, the Resur event starting, uh, on January 26th. And we're setting aside some. Um, I, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Rice's Pharmacy, little pharmacy that's just been an amazing partner, getting out into people's homes and into, uh, into facilities where, uh, to, to serve people who, um, who can't come out to a clinic. Um, and, and we need more opportunity, more vaccine to take advantage of more opportunities like the, like the Rice's Pharmacy, uh, partners that we have out there so that we can, we can get everyone vaccinated who'd like to.
Thank you, April.
Uh, yes, thank you, April. Appreciate that. If I might just add, so Suzanne mentioned the, uh, uh, OHA enrolled, uh, vaccine providers for COVID vaccine. So, uh, the Corvallis Clinic is an enrolled provider, so, um, they, they will, uh, be reaching out to their patient population. Um, in addition, the CHC Centers, the Community Health Centers in Lynn and Benton County are enrolled providers, so they will be reaching out to their population. And, um, in addition, especially for, uh, smaller practices within the community, uh, we would like to get more enrolled so that they could reach out to their, uh, population. And, and, and an example of that is Corvallis Family Medicine, which has formed a strike team vaccine where they will, are committed to delivering vaccines to those people that are on the most recently high priority list of the thousand vaccines that April was referring to. They will, uh, reach, go, make home visits to their patients who would not, um, be, uh, really able to come to a mass vaccination clinic. And there'll be, there's many, many more people in our community that would not be served well by coming to a mass vaccination clinic. So this is, uh, a gap that the strike team vaccine will be addressing.
Thank you. Are there further questions for either Dr. Thompson or for April?
Is there any question? Thank you. Uh, well, first a comment I'll just pass along. I have a constituent who asked or suggested that it would be nice to have numbers, the total numbers of vaccines, um, that we've received posted in a place where the public can view it. Although, listening to all the different numbers and how fast they change, I understand that might not, um, be feasible. Um, but I told her I'd pass that along. And then I have a question, this might not be appropriate for you folks. Um, but I have some, I received some questions and concerns about the Lynn County event that's, that's going on. Um, I don't know if any of you have, can answer questions about that?
Go ahead. Yes.
Great. Uh, so there was, I've had a couple people reach out. One concern was over, um, or you say both, both concerns are about, um, like proving who you are. And one concern was proving that you are, are a resident. Um, and what ID is needed when you get there to, um, prove who you are? Uh, and one concern is that the DMV is like three months behind. Um, and, you know, if you lose your ID and the DMV can't get you anything for three months, what other ID can they use to prove who they are?
April, do you want to take that or I can address it?
I can, I know that they're trying to make the, the barriers as few as possible, um, for people. So, um, I, I don't have specifics in the case of a lost ID. You know, I, I think that if people have an electronic device and they can show that they have the appointment scheduled on, on their phone or a printout, that, that may suffice. Unfortunately, I can't speak to the specifics of, of their protocol and, and when they would, um, actually turn someone away. I know that they are working on low barriers for access.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there, uh, just to follow up on that, um, they, uh, people can register online if they have access to the internet. And that's basically, that's your pass into the, into the clinic. Uh, there, we're, you know, it's taken for granted that there will be some people who do not fall into Phase, strictly fall into Phase 1A that may be, uh, looking for a vaccine. Uh, most of these, uh, mass vacs clinics, uh, Salem Health, for instance, um, who do 2,000 vaccines a day, uh, turn, turn away very few. You have to have, you have to come with red flags all around you in order to get turned away. So, uh, there is no verification at the door. Um, it, the registration online is very helpful. It very much speeds up the whole process.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for clarifying that.
I can add a small piece on, on accessibility. Um, I, I do want to add that we did receive, um, pre-scheduling access for prioritized populations for the Lynn County event. And we're able to schedule hundreds of people in, um, in the highest, um, priority vulnerability, um, categories. Um, at least 300 here in the EOC were scheduled. And I know that our IDDD team were working separately to ensure that as many people as possible were able to get into that Lynn event. And we will, um, hope to utilize some sort of pre-scheduling, uh, likewise for the most vulnerable, um, for the Resur event as well.
You and Commissioner Malone?
Uh, yeah, you, you mentioned the 1A population. Uh, so that, that's the group that's, uh, has the priority at this point. I know way back last week, uh, the governor was collapsing the Eaton Tidy 1A and the four categories under there and then 1B. Uh, could you, uh, go over the, uh, who, who the current target population is and, and, I guess, what, what you, uh, how you see the rollout of the categories going forward?
Thanks. It's, it's, it is a moving target and, and, yeah, things are changing quickly, of course. Um, yeah, so, so our priority will stay on the Phase 1A as defined in the, the Vaccine Sequencing Plan for Phase 1A, which includes us four groups that some of us are, are very, very familiar with. Um, when, when, there, there are various ways that we can decide to move forward to the next groups, which it seems at this point will be educators. Um, K, birth through 12, uh, grade 12 educators. Um, and following that, um, I'm guessing 65 and, and older. We are awaiting some, uh, guidance specifically, but that's the latest as I understand it. Um, and determining when the point is to move forward, you know, it, it will be, um, based on a few factors. Um, we're, we have a team of liaisons here who, uh, who are working through lists of, of facilities and agencies who we know are within Phase 1A to ensure that they've received outreach or vaccination. Um, and then, uh, we can utilize scheduling tools and when we see that scheduling, um, we can start opening up perhaps to, to the educators. But we really want to ensure comprehensive outreach to the extent that it's available before moving forward.
I would add to, um, to April's comment, something that Dr. Thompson pointed out to us as well, which is, um, although I think there's, uh, generally speaking, good uptake of vaccine, uh, so far, um, there are some who are declining, uh, for whatever reason. And what that means is as people decline who are in that Phase 1A group, uh, that vaccine will be available, uh, potentially to move more quickly, uh, to, to other groups who may not be in Phase 1A but, but are ready, um, for, for vaccination. So, um, and, uh, someone may decline at any time. Um, they can change their mind and come back later, but they would probably come back as just in that general population group and not necessarily back into, uh, high priority group.
Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, it's a very tricky balance to maintain to try to, um, be principled about getting, uh, vaccine out to all the priority groups and to get it out as fast as possible and meet demand, especially when we don't have enough supply. Um, so I, I really appreciate the efforts. Um, I think standing up the Emergency Operations, um, Center was the right, uh, thing to do in order to accelerate our planning and make sure that, as you mentioned, we had the right, uh, command and control in order to do things efficiently. So, thank you all. Um, I really appreciate your efforts and, uh, appreciate you all keeping us up to date. Um, I would like to, uh, move on, uh, if there are no other questions from my fellow commissioners at this point, to Kate Portia.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll be very brief. I just have three quick items for you. Um, one, wanted to update and let you know that, um, all the grants funds from the local round and the governor's round, of course, have gone out. We are expecting a breakdown of demographic information on that, um, this week and will be certain to pass that on. In fact, we'll probably discuss it with you next week when we present at your regular meeting for our, um, quarterly update. Um, PTE, we have almost out the door this first round, um, that we received, which turned out to be seven pallets of PTE. To give you an idea, we're talking about 80,000 masks, 20,000 gloves, 4,800 boxes of sanitizing wipes. So we've been working on making those deliveries and, um, doing contactless pickup. It's been going great and great thanks to Heather and Catherine and their work to get that going. And finally, as we look forward, we're in a little bit of, um, of a lull for our work, but we're, um, eagerly awaiting some news coming out from Business Oregon related to commercial rent relief. Um, that was the directive of the Governor's E-Board for Business Oregon to work on that. And then, of course, the potential for future funding packages that'll be coming down for the Fed. And we'll be watching those, uh, very closely. So that's the end of my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Kate Portia? And, and do we have a report from Danielle Summers?
Commissioner Ashram?
Yes.
Suzanne, uh, I, I think we just have a little hiccup here. And with the standup of the EOC, Debbie Parsons has actually, uh, taken over as our, uh, Finance Grant Chief. Uh, and Danielle Summers is, uh, playing more of a supportive role. And it could just be that we did not get the word to Debbie to be a part of this conversation today. I apologize for that and we'll be sure she's included next time.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that concludes item 4.1 then, and we will move on, uh, to item 4.2.
Commissioner Ashram?
Yes.
I'm sorry, before we move on, did Lilia, uh, join us this?
I'm sorry. Yes, she's here. Lilia, do you have a report from the JIC?
Yes, I do, Commissioner. I'm happy to share it with you all. Um, so last week, we activated the JIC in tandem, um, in full activation with the Emergency Operations Center. Um, our primary, uh, focus was really to, um, respond to all community concerns that were coming in via email, social media, and the phone, um, to really try and maintain that trust that we've built over the last nine months and within the community. So as an example, um, in terms of the increased, um, concern or just request for information, uh, just last week, our phone bank fielded, uh, 224 calls. So I think one of the last numbers that you heard about the phone bank was that they had 12 in one day. On Friday, I believe they had 80 calls in one day. So we are working diligently to staff up appropriately within our call bank. Um, we're also planning on utilizing the call bank for, um, yeah, I'm sorry. It is, what I'm referring to is the needs survey that April was just speaking about. So individuals, um, who don't regularly use the internet or don't have access to the internet to complete this needs survey, um, will have the opportunity to call the phone bank to complete the survey over the phone. Um, so that is another reason why we need to have adequate staffing at the phone bank to support that tactic. Additionally, last week, um, we put together a vaccine distribution communications plan. Really, we were putting it together with our eye on next week's, next week's vaccination clinics. Um, but as you all know, this is moving so quickly and we're having to communicate about events that, um, that we're partners of, but we aren't like the primary host. For example, this week's Lynn County event. We still need to communicate about all of these events, whether or not Benton County is the primary host. So we, um, worked to, as I said, create a communication plan that can serve as a framework as we move forward for any events that we work to publicize. So it's almost like a rinse and repeat, um, for our Joint Information Center. So that was the big accomplishment of last week. Um, and then one thing that we are pushing out, um, early this week is a, uh, more simplified, I would say, version of that needs assessment survey. The first survey that, um, was put out, um, could have had, uh, improvements in terms of the user experience and the interface using conditional logic. So we have the English Language one, um, complete. We're working on translating that. And so hopefully, as more and more folks utilize that survey moving into next week's vaccination event, um, we will receive less, uh, questions from the phone bank or via email about completing the survey. Uh, in addition to that, um, we're doing our standard support of the emergency response. Um, we're maintaining up-to-date talking points for not only the phone bank, but also for our liaison officers. Uh, we're monitoring news and public perception as well as maintaining all of our previous prevention information, reminding folks that as members of our community get vaccinated, we still need to be really vigilant with COVID prevention. And so with that...
Uh, there is a caller that has their phone on. Could you please mute if you are not muted? Uh, we are getting background noise, sounds like air flow in a car. Thank you, Lilia. Uh, you play a vital role, you and your team, uh, and we really appreciate it. Questions for Lilia?
Um, you, you might explain, we've got quite a few, um, callers on, on the line today, what the heck the JIC is and, uh, uh, and what you're doing is critical. There, there's so much misinformation and, uh, changing hourly. Uh, what you're doing is, uh, is vital and hopefully we can get, um, uh, more of the phone calls to, uh, people that have the information rather than, uh, everybody going, uh, doctor's offices, pharmacies, that, that, that don't really have, uh, the needed information.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner, for your support. Um, so for those on the phone, um, a joint, uh, JIC is the acronym, uh, for Joint Information Center. It is, um, it runs in parallel to the Emergency Operations Center. Um, we have our own sections. We have an information gathering section, information distribution section, media relations section, and operations section. Um, and we have been in running at some capacity since, uh, March of 2020. So, um, yep, we are here to engage and respond to community concern as well as provide and support internal communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready to move on to item 4.2, which is, um, a change of pace, uh, but still, uh, coming from the Health Department primarily. Danielle Brown, uh, with a discussion regarding Children and Family Program Development, uh, uh, proposal. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. Um, so I wanted to talk with you...
So I wanted to talk with you about the Children and Family Program that we have within the Behavioral Health Division of the Health Department. In your packets, you have a written proposal with some financial information regarding the development of this program. So just to give a little bit of background, for about the last seven years, seven or eight years, Benton County Health Department has been providing minimal child and family support services for mental health treatment. Provided wraparound care coordination for a very small group of individuals that meet qualifications for that program. And in October of 2019, I'm sure some of you recall, the contract for school-based mental health services was expiring, so we made the decision at that point to resume those services within the Health Department and started pretty quickly developing that program. Right now, we have two master's level clinicians and one bachelor's level clinician providing those school-based mental health services, mostly to the rural schools, as Corvallis School District does have its own program within its school district setting. Since I've been here in August of 2017, IHNCCO has been asking us to consider providing outpatient mental health services to children and families in Benton County. There's been a pretty big capacity issue within the county that's resulted in relatively long waiting lists and difficulty in accessing care for these children and families, specifically those who have pretty high needs. So with our last contract negotiation for 2021, IHN did propose again that we restart our Children and Family Mental Health Treatment Program and agreed to fund the program in a way that would make it worth our while to provide those services so we can have a self-sustaining program. So what I'm proposing today is that we, in the Behavioral Health Division, resume those services starting hopefully around April of 2021 to provide outpatient mental health services to high-needs families within Benton County. That will help the capacity issues within the entire county and access to care. That will also support high-needs families that are struggling with access to services right now because of the long wait lists. The biggest piece that we're hoping to be able to impact is the ability for children to remain in the home. What we're seeing happening with families who have high mental health treatment needs and who are unable to access appropriate care is that children will end up in psychiatric residential treatment services, PRTS, because the services, the needs for the children just get so out of hand that the family can no longer support them in the home environment. So our hope would be that we can provide services both in a clinic setting and in a home setting to help these families remain intact and have children remain in the home. We all know that it is not beneficial for children to be placed in residential treatment. There's a ton of evidence that indicates moving children out of their home environment when it isn't absolutely necessary is more detrimental than it is helpful. So our hope is to help provide those services to these high-needs families in a way that meets the family needs. We're also hoping to be able to impact the services that are being provided by our community partners who aren't mental health treatment providers, children's programs like child welfare, programs like the Juvenile Department, programs like Jackson Street Youth Shelter that need additional mental health support. We're hoping to be able to integrate our services into those programming to help support those individuals that are relatively high-needs and seeking those levels of care. In the packet that I submitted to you this morning, you will see the written proposal, which includes the financial and revenue projections. What I'd like to point out on the revenue projections is the IHN total and the RAP payment, which the RAP payment, for those who aren't familiar, is a full-cost reimbursement payment program because we're integrated with our health centers, our federally qualified health center within Benton County. So that allows us to provide, to receive revenue under that health center reimbursement model that is a full-cost reimbursement, which really makes this program fully sustainable once we get the caseloads to our maximum levels. What I'm proposing is that we initially hire one bachelor's level clinician, one master's level clinician, with the intention of building caseloads. And once those caseloads get more close to capacity, then we'll hire the additional staff with the intention of having a total of six staff managing this program, including a program manager to oversee the children's programming. With the addition of this outpatient program, our wraparound services, and our school-based mental health, it really is just too much for our outpatient manager to be able to continue to manage an entirely new program. So the packet that you have submitted includes staffing costs for two different QMHA-level staff, so bachelor's level clinician, three master's level clinicians, and a program manager in order to sustain this program ongoing. And you will see that the projected staff cost and the revenue totals will make this program self-sustaining when we get it to capacity. So I will pause there for questions.
I think you answered one of mine off the bat, and that is that the new program manager will oversee all of these programs for children and families, wraparound, school-based, the high-needs programming, and also the intensive care coordination?
Correct, yes. So currently, the intensive care coordination for Benton County is being provided by IHNCCO, which is difficult because they're the insurance provider and shouldn't be doing service provision. But out of necessity, they have had to do the intensive care coordination. Their contract requires that that service be available within each county in the region. So we would assume that intensive care coordination service is part of our outpatient programming to help support those families that are needing that intensive care coordination to navigate really difficult and cumbersome systems.
Yeah, I know that that has been an incredible concern on the part of our constituents and parents, especially when there are cases of suicidal ideation and inability to get care immediately. So, right, I think that that's a very important piece and that will be provided by these new employees?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I think my biggest concern, I'm very supportive, as I mentioned before, this is an issue area I've heard a lot about from constituents across the county. It's a wrenching issue when you have children that have serious mental health issues and families that are very dysfunctional, especially knowing that if we had the capacity, we could change the trajectory for those families. My biggest issue is the question of management at this time. It is July 1st, I mean, soon enough to start advertising for a program manager? I'm concerned about capacity, especially given the other issues that you're focusing on in terms of mental health, law enforcement, collaboration, and the potential for a crisis resource center, and concerned about bandwidth, frankly.
Yeah, that's a great question Commissioner Ojeros. I think where I'm stuck is wanting to make sure that the program has the capacity to get up and going without front-loading it with the cost of the county at the gate. So I think that's what I've kind of been tripping over. I do think we have an outpatient program manager, Ashley Telamontes and Ricky Garcia, that oversee our outpatient program, that are invested in seeing this program get up and off the ground. And Ashley and Ricky have been overseeing our wraparound care coordination and our school-based mental health services. The hope with the program managers starting in July, or advertising rather, starting in July was twofold. One, that's the new budget period, so we were going to build that into our 2123 biennium budget. And the program would have got some feet under it hopefully at that point with the oversight of myself, Ashley, and Ricky to really build off of the school-based mental health program that we already have. I think there's enough capacity right now to get the program up and going with myself, Ashley, and Ricky, with the intention of having a program manager in later in the year.
Okay. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, I really support this program. I do, I've heard long waits for getting any help and that's not a good business model. And also, I like ramping up schedule gradually, adding capacity, and then after the new fiscal year, getting fully staffed. So to me, that seems like a good plan.
Thank you.
I have another quick question. Given that these services will be in scope, I'm assuming that there is also then some logistical support for all of this service provision from the FQHC, that's correct?
That is correct, yeah. These will be supported by the FQHC and the Health Management Services within the Health Department, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I have just, not necessarily questions, but a couple of comments. I just want to sing Danielle's praises and all of the other staff that were involved with this. I'm beyond happy that we are expanding this service. It's vital. And for those who may be watching from home and maybe haven't looked at the packet, I think there's a little blurb in here that perfectly sums this up. The development of a children's mental health program will increase early intervention, empowering families to engage in their child's mental health care. Early intervention is particularly important for prevention of profound, long-term consequences for children. This program will increase access to high-risk, high-needs children and their families, thereby creating community resilience and equity. Again, I'm just beyond happy that we are moving forward with this. Both times that I ran for County Commissioner, mental health services was a big topic that came up and, you know, we heard a lot of criticism of, well, how are you going to fund that? And, you know, trying to explain to people that there are options for, you know, partnering with other funding. So under fiscal impact description, IHNCCO has agreed to funding the implementation of the program based on projections provided by Benton County Health Department. Additionally, because this program will be provided within the scope of the Health Centers for Benton and Lynn Counties, the services will be eligible for full-cost reimbursement RAP funds. So this is just a great position that we are in. We're doing good work for the community and being reimbursed for it. So thank you very much for all your work on this.
Thank you Commissioner Ojeros.
Are there additional questions or comments for Danielle?
There is, I'm ever interested in part of the direction.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
A comment and then a motion. I'm all in favor and it doesn't matter what the topic is, solving problems when they're solvable and relatively small. And I think this approach fits right in. So my motion is I move to approve the Children and Family outpatient mental health program replacement on February 2nd, 2021 agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We look forward to supporting this program as it develops. And one quick question, do you expect that there is a serious backlog of demand and that you will become booked up immediately upon building this capacity?
I do think there is a pretty significant backlog in demand and we will get filled pretty quickly. I think we'll need to do some advertising because we haven't provided these services in a long period of time, so, you know, we'll have to do some outreach. But I think that that will fill very, very quickly.
Okay. My biggest concern is just making sure that you all take care of yourselves and that we not overpromise in terms of what we can do, especially in light of other organizational priorities. But I know that you tend to be cautious and conservative, so I am supportive of this effort wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
And the whole board is, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Moving on to item 4.3, a discussion of statewide transportation improvement fund, fiscal year 2022-23 formula projects. And this discussion will be led by Gary Stockhoff from Public Works, Alisa Scherf and Brad Dillingham based in the city of Corvallis, representing our transit programs.
Thank you Commissioners. Real quick, on the agenda, oh, there's Lisa there? Perfect, okay. So we thought we were at 10:30, so we've been scrambling to get here folks a little early. So this is the STIF group, the STIF funding that came about as a result of House Bill 2017. This is our second round of submitting projects. They are due February 1st. So we are very appreciative of Teresa getting us on this work session so that we can come to you on the 2nd and we're still good to go with that timing for ODOT. But the good news is, is we've got sufficient funds for several projects. The STIF committee met a week or so ago, went over those to prioritize those. And I think that we have a path forward and I will turn the time over to Lisa Scherf now to go through the presentation for you.
Thank you Gary. Good morning Commissioners. This is, as Gary described, this money was established by the Oregon Legislature in 2017 and appears in the form of an employee payroll tax on all employees throughout the state, generates a little more than $100 million a year statewide and has been an incredible source of match-free funding for transit agencies in the last several years. So this is our second round and because of a combination of being kind of the first round of doing this and COVID frankly, many of the projects that the Board included in its plan two years ago did not get off the ground or got off the ground in a partial fashion. So the result of that, between that, the projects not getting initiated as expected and more revenue being generated than anticipated, about $178,000, more than what ODOT projected, we do end this biennium with a significant amount of unspent funds. And so going into the next biennium, which is the one at issue here, we're in a good position to be able to fund really all of the projects that were requested. And we've been paying attention to, as we go forward into the future, making sure that we stay within what we think is a reasonable limit for operations projects that will be ongoing. Because while there's a mix of capital projects and operational projects, if we fund, if we overfund operations projects, we might find ourselves in the future having to cut back on service, which is something we, of course, would prefer not to do. So while this slate of projects does appear to kind of reach that threshold, we have confidence that in future, coming out of COVID, again, this is not, we're good for the next biennium and in the out biennium, there's enough reserves that we could even, we would be able to stay home. And beyond that, the crystal ball is just a little too cloudy, but I have the confidence that we will be funding, we are funding operational projects at a level that are sustainable, that is sustainable. And so Gary mentioned that our STIF committee met recently. They've actually met, I think, four times going back to September. So they've been meeting monthly and kind of familiarizing themselves with the process. They heard presentations from applicants, which include what you'll see referred to as public transportation service providers, or PTSPs. As you may know, Benton County is the qualified entity in this area, which is statewide is either a transit district, a tribe, or a county that will be a qualified entity or a QE, and that is Benton County. In the absence of a tribe or a transit district, it's Benton County here. So we're running the process and also we are a PTSP. So City of Albany applied, Cascades, Oregon Cascade, West Council of Government, City of Corvallis on behalf of both the City of Bollomuth and the Bollomuth Connection, and on behalf of Corvallis Transit System applied, and Benton County, Benton Area Transit. and on behalf of Corvallis Transit System applied, and Benton County, Benton Area Transit. So you'll see the list of projects, I'm not really going to go through them. In order, what I do want to describe is how the projects were ranked. It is required that, ODOT requires us to rank them, which is, is frankly difficult to do because they're all good projects in their own ways. And so staff went through an exercise where we, we looked at existing projects that had been funded in the last STIF plan and assumed that those projects were still, would be priorities, that if the, if the board had approved them once and they were good projects and some of them didn't get off the ground because of COVID, that they would be priorities again. So we just sort of put those projects at the very top and said, yes, they should be funded. And then we looked at within, within the, the each provider. So for example, City of Albany had some projects that were Lynn-Benton Loop projects, some projects that were North Albany projects. And those applicants were asked to rank their own projects. And so we did that. We, we considered how they were ranked. And then we looked at the list of criteria that the STIF money is tasked with considering. Examples, service to low-income communities, I'm going to blank on many of them because there are seven or eight, providing service to high school students and a number of, of criteria. Staff tried to do an objective, 1 through 10, how does each project meet those criteria? We kind of did a point exercise, saw how they fell out and used that as another lens. And so the, the result, and then just did a little sort of local consideration, tweaking at the committee level, and came up with the ranked list that you see today in, in the spreadsheet that's in the packet. And so what we're asking for today is that, that the board consider this list of projects and either accept them as presented or make, make some final adjustments. You're certainly welcome to ask questions if you need more information. And the result of this is going to be the development of a STIF plan, which is really a program of projects. And we'll be, staff will be developing that plan over the next several weeks and submitting it to ODOT. And then we would expect that as of July 1, we would have approval of that plan, which is basically is the grant agreement. Approval of the plan at ODOT takes the form of the grant agreement with ODOT. And with that, I would, I would invite questions if you have them.
Questions?
Just a comment, I'm on several transportation committees and familiar with most of these projects. So I'm very familiar because we've talked about them for a couple of years. But I appreciate how hard it is to do the ranking, but what I've seen, it makes sense. And I'm thrilled that there is funding to advance these projects.
Thank you.
And this isn't, this isn't necessarily pertinent to this, what we're doing right now, but will become very pertinent. The state is, the state legislature did have a special, one of their special sessions this year directed the combining of the, this source of funding, the STIF funding, with the Special Transportation Fund, FTS funding into one process, one, one program, one process, one committee. So we have that to look forward to. I've just been invited to sit on the statewide committee that will develop the rules for that. And I'm thrilled to be, so we'll have, we'll have an inside track on how this develops. But I just want you to know this, this, you're going to, it's going to look different in future. So stay tuned on that.
Thank you, I'm glad that's still moving forward. Having two STIF committees, it's a little too confusing for everyone. The other question I have for you is about long-range planning. Given that this is a responsive process with all of the public transportation service providers putting in their own proposals, I know that the initial goal was for our advisory committee to also be thinking about a vision. So is that ongoing as well? And are these proposals that you received in this round responsive to that long-term vision? Or were there any surprises?
I, I would say there weren't any surprises. In order to be eligible, the projects have to be contained within an adopted plan. And so as you know, the region has done a lot of planning, transportation planning in the last four or five years. And so all the projects have, are fresh and a result of those planning projects. I'm looking at the list to see if there's anything that truly is a surprise. Not really. The OSU Mobility Hub came out of the Lynn-Benton Loop Group that, that contains members of both OSU and Lynn-Benton Community College. And I'm pretty excited about that project because it is such a, it represents such a collaboration of the providers in the region. It literally would serve every provider that's an applicant in our plan, in, in that one project. So that's, that's maybe the one that isn't as directly the result of the Corvallis Transit System Plan or the Albany Transit System Plan, but no surprises, I would say.
I would also say, Commissioner, that, you know, we are a pretty small region when you get down to it. And it's imperative that we coordinate with Albany Trans and Lynn-Benton Loop, all those. And, and I think we're fortunate that we're on both AMFO and CAMFO boards and policy groups. And so it really is, it's co-mingling and cross-pollination of, of all those routes. And as we've heard before, we really are trying to be a seamless service, even to Lincoln County, on up the coast, you know, hang out and work together, all of our smaller rural, more trend-based agencies because we've got to. So I think we're on the right track and a lot of these projects you see are really trying to make sure that we're taking into account our neighbors and doing the most that we can with the money that we do get.
That's great. And I was very glad to see the, the cost sharing proposed between our qualified entity and Lynn Counties when it comes to the North Albany Service and the Lynn-Benton Loop Service. And I know that the long, longer-term vision is from even more of an east-west corridor, not just linking Lincoln County and Benton County, but going eastward toward East Lynn County as well. So first, we have to get all of these under our belt. And I'm excited about the progress that's been made. Thank you. Are there other questions? Be happy to entertain a motion.
The fifth item be forwarded to the February 2nd, 2021 board meeting.
Do after the next thing.
Second. Is there discussion? Gary, did you have another comment?
No, just a brain cramp that's frozen by Idaho, so it's all good.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Sorry, I was muted at that point, listening to the transmissions coming from elsewhere. Thank you, and we will take a final vote on that on February 2nd.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this point, I would like to propose a recess for 15 minutes so that we can get our next Public Works employee queued up for, queued up for our regular business meeting. So we will stand in recess until 10:30.
Good morning again. It's 10:30. We are just about ready to resume our meeting with our business meeting.
Commissioner Ojero, sorry to interrupt. I was just wanting to double check with Teresa. When I look at the consent calendar that I opened up, it only shows 5.1, but in the packet it shows 5.2 and 5.3. So I am not sure if I am looking at the wrong agenda or the wrong packet. But if we are intended to approve minutes and they're not represented on the agenda, I just wanted to highlight that.
They're on my agenda. Yes, they are on the agenda and they are included in the packet.
Yeah, Theresa, you may want to check the agenda, the full agenda packet. It doesn't show on the agenda that's in there. I see that also, Joe, on the agenda that I printed out, but I do have it in the packet. All three items.
And can I clarify something too? At one meeting, it wasn't the board meeting, it was, I forget which other one, but there was talk about how I shouldn't be approving the minutes or voting on the minutes. Is that the same for these board minutes?
Anytime you were on the agenda at a meeting, yeah.
Well, so nobody, well, is it that I'm not at the meeting or I wasn't on the board at the time? Because I was on the meeting that, like, if the minute says Nancy wasn't present as a-
You were not on the board, not on the present-
Okay.
On the board at the time.
Okay, is that by, is that a county policy? Because I know things are, we do it different, they do it differently at the city.
Actually, actually, sorry. I keep doing that, don't I? Sorry Nancy, it's, it's just the fact that you, hyper-technically, don't have the authority to approve something you didn't participate in. So not being a commissioner, you can't approve minutes for something you weren't a member of, if that makes sense.
Sure, okay, just they do it differently at the city, so that was my confusion. Should I not vote on the consent calendar then?
What we have done in the past when we've run into this issue, and we ran into it a lot, because over the course of last year, we've been cleaning up meeting minutes going back five, sometimes six years. So yours is not a, an unusual question. What we typically do is we pull the minutes from the consent calendar. All three board members approve the remainder of the consent calendar. And then those commissioners who were on the board at the time of the minutes will vote, will move second and approve the minutes that have been removed from the consent calendar.
Joe, I see what you mean about the two, the packet agenda and the standalone agenda being different. I think that we should just set aside the minutes for this particular meeting, since they were not on the agenda that was published, unless you think otherwise.
I think Theresa, can you confirm which agenda was published? If it was the agenda reflecting the minutes, I think you're okay. If it said the agenda did not reflect the minutes that was published, then you should forego it.
The agenda that was published on the website and in the meeting notice for the papers and your packets and in your calendars all show the minutes to be approved. I'm not sure where the agenda that you are pulling up, but everything that I see in your calendars and on the web and the packet all include minutes.
The packet is the one that doesn't, from what I can see Theresa, but the other does.
Commissioner, if there's, if it's in question in your mind, then you can, we can move the minutes to the next meeting. If we know that they've been published, I believe you're fine with going ahead and approving them.
Okay, I propose that we go ahead and separate the consent calendar into item 5.1 and then take the minutes, items 5.2 and 5.3 as a separate item. So I would like to entertain a motion with respect to the consent calendar containing item 5.1 appointments only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to items 5.2 and 5.3, approval of December 15th and December 22nd, 2020 board minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes stand approved. Moving on to old business, item 6.1, Lori Starha, regarding discussion and decision to amend the natural areas and parks board bylaws.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm before you here today to discuss the revised bylaws to the Benton County Natural Areas and Parks Advisory Board. I presented to you in December on the 22nd.
I would like to ask everyone to please mute their telephones. We are getting quite a lot of interference, it sounds like, from patrol car radio.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner Ojero. So I came before the board in December with revisions to the bylaws. The Natural Areas and Parks Advisory Board had been working on revised bylaws over several meetings. There was some recommendation by the Board of Commissioners in December to flush out a bit more on the function and vision of the natural areas and bylaws, which they did at their last meeting on January 13th. The advisory board made some changes to, under the functions, and we did leave it as functions, which are consistent across the organization for other boards. They, you should have a copy of the bylaws that have all the track changes. Primarily what they added to the first paragraph under Article 2 function is Benton County actively promotes a range of outdoor recreation activity and places a high value on diverse ecosystems and open spaces. County parks and natural areas are managed to protect and restore natural features and promote health access and equity for all. They did go on to make some adjustments down in the second. That does reflect the new name of our department. But also in areas related to Benton County, the focus of the committee is related to our Benton County's 2040 Vision Statement on Outdoor Recreation and the Benton County Natural Areas and Parks Comprehensive Plan. There was also some minor grammar changes that they made, but overall, that was the change they made from the December meeting.
Thank you Lori. I think that addresses the concerns that Commissioner Harameo and I had, and echoed by Commissioner Malone in December, about needing to address the value of natural areas and ecosystems and not just recreation. So I appreciate that greatly. Are there any other comments or discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Let's see. I move to approve revised bylaws and purpose statements of the Benton County Natural Areas and Parks Advisory Board.
Second. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
I did have a follow-up question. Vance, can we do some kind of resolution so that Lori can't retire so soon?
Well, you know, you are discussing appointment of interim sheriff. Perhaps that could be a condition, that the sheriff doesn't allow her to leave.
Lori, I did want to say it's been a real pleasure working with you and we will miss you.
Well, thank you. I will be gone but not forgotten. I'm sure you'll see me in some meetings from, you know, a couple times and providing some support to the new director Lynn McKee. But thank you. You've been a wonderful commission to work with and I'll miss you guys too.
Thank you Lori. We're now moving on to departmental reports and requests with item 7.1, Discussion and Decision to Accept a Right-of-Way Dedication from BFO Independence LLC on Bell Fountain Road, County Road Number 25100, Dave Malone, Public Works.
Good morning commissioners. This right-of-way dedication resulted from a project where we were replacing a failing culvert underneath Bell Fountain Road where Bull Run Creek crosses. And we were needing to get a little bit of extra right-of-way to make a little bit longer of a culvert so it'd be a better engineering solution. And during that process, we discovered at the time that the Greenbelt Land Trust was in communications with BFO Independence to purchase a portion of their property and place a long-term conservation easement on it. Our transportation plan calls for widening through that section of Bell Fountain and we were already aware of a conservation easement on the west side of the road. And so we decided to go ahead at this time and purchase an additional 20 feet of width on the east side of the road so that we wouldn't be blocked out in the future by any kind of conservation easements or anything when we do go in the future to widen the road. Now, there's no immediate timeline for that widening, but we didn't want to have a problem. These conservation easements tend to be, for example, 100-year easements and things. Since that time, Greenbelt, it's my understanding, is maybe not, no longer purchasing that piece of property, but it still meets our goal for the long-term widening of Bell Fountain through the stretch. So we went ahead and completed the purchase. We also need, like I said, we needed a little bit of extra land for the culvert widening, no matter what. So we went ahead and completed the purchase of the right-of-way and at this point, we just need the commission to accept that right-of-way into county locations. Any questions?
Pat?
Yeah, Dave, can you talk about the purpose for widening Bell Fountain? And is there any, I remember discussing a long time ago, a, I think a little, a better path along the side of the road? So I guess the question is just, what's, what's the purpose of the potential widening of Bell Fountain?
Yes. Excuse me. Honestly, I'm not the best person to answer that question. I think Laura Byer, the county engineer, would be the best. My understanding would be that Bell Fountain has been identified as a corridor where with the amount of traffic and with the amount of pedestrian and bicycle use on it, it doesn't really meet what our goals are for a safe but heavily-used byway. And the goal would be to widen the road as, as we do improvements along it, as those improvements come up. And also therefore provide bike lanes so that our other users besides vehicles are safe to use that road. Makes it a more livable community, to use catchphrases. I don't know if Gary Stockhoff, I see he's online, if he wants to add to that?
Dave is spot-on. So part of the transportation plan update was there's a further corridor study being done that will be done on Bell Fountain and Fern, truck route versus bike route. And so I think that's still something to be done, but this really ensures our ability to follow through and widen the road to accommodate whatever that corridor ends up being in the future. So it's a very preemptive strike to making sure that we can do that. So yes, Dave was correct and that's just a little bit more information of where we're at. And I will say, at this point, we do not have that corridor, those studies on the schedule at this time.
Right. And I would add that Bell Fountain, being the length of road that it is and, you know, the constant budget constraints, over time, we have made small improvements here and here. When we get the opportunity to do road improvements, we're always looking- When we get the opportunity to do road improvements, we're always looking to the future to see what we can do now as we do those piece-by-piece road improvements to ultimately have our, you know, our end goal, where we're not trying to do it all in one big shot.
I really appreciate that thinking ahead and thinking strategically in accordance with our 2040 visions and values, as you mentioned, community livability.
Right. Any other questions?
If there are no further questions for Dave, I will entertain a motion.
I move to accept the right-of-way dedication from BFO Independence LLC for public road and utility purposes over Bell Fountain Road, County Road Number 25100.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you, Dave and Gary. Good work. Move on.
Thank you, Commissioners. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
And you too. Item 7.2, in the matter of further extending our declaration of emergency, Vance Kearney, County Council.
Commissioner Ojero, this is yet another extension of the emergency declaration the Board of Commissioners originally issued on March 17, 2020. It has been extended one, two, two other times, this, three other times, this will be the fourth time. Really pretty straightforward. The current extension timeframe expires January 31st. We're putting this resolution before you that extends the emergency declaration through April 30, 2021.
Are there any questions for Vance?
Vance, how does this timetable line up with what the state is doing?
We really, it doesn't necessarily align with the state, Commissioner Malone. It really tracks more with what Brian Lee and Suzanne Hoffman believe is going to be our vaccine rollout timetable and need for the emergency declaration as it relates to Benton County's efforts to get vaccines to the population.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Malone, I would like to share that I think it's very likely that even this one that the board is being asked to approve today will likely be before you in April to extend it even further based on where the vaccination implementation is at. So just kind of a heads up that this isn't the last time you're going to see this. You'll likely see it again in April, asking for another extension. As Vance indicated, we didn't try and coordinate this with the, whatever actions the state is taking. We are, I would say, in concert with the city of Corvallis. The city has a emergency declaration that's also in place that expires when the city manager deems it necessary to terminate it. And so that emergency declaration is still in place for the foreseeable future based on conversations with the city manager.
Thank you for those clarifications. And for those of you that are listening, the Emergency Operations Center that we heard from earlier does include city employees as well. It has been a collaborative effort over time to address the COVID emergency and the fire emergency as well. So are there any other questions for Vance or Joe? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt order number D 2021-024, extending the declared state of local emergency through April 30th, 2021.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next is item 8.2, in the matter of consideration, oh no, 8.1, excuse me, in the matter of a resolution condemning the attack on the U.S. Capitol Building on January 6, 2021, presented by Commissioner Weiss.
That was a bad time for my computer to, or the Wi-Fi to drop off.
There are now two of you on my screen. Back to one. Okay.
For me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So as you can see in the packet, I submitted a resolution, and County Council did look over it and had some feedback questioning, you know, just mentioning things that might be moving slightly past condemning and assigning blame. And I just said, I think, you know, good that us Commissioners talk about it and we can decide if we want to change anything or accept it or not accept it. So I'm open to feedback from my fellow Commissioners.
I am fine with the resolution as drafted. I appreciate your initiative in doing so and concur with your sentiments.
I also appreciate your effort in this and recognizing the seriousness of what happened in our Capitol. And so I don't think I have any changes.
Okay. And then do we need to have County Council read the title to move it, or do I move it? So I would move the resolution?
I will second that.
Is there any further discussion? Joe?
Commissioner, I just wanted to interject. I know Vance and I had some discussions last week, and I just wanted to give Vance the opportunity to weigh in if he felt necessary at this time.
Thanks, Joe. No, I raised some comments for Commissioner Weiss, just as somebody looking at it from a different perspective. And if you guys are all fine with it, that's fine with me as well. I just, like I said, I just wanted to note some of the different angles through which, different lenses through which that resolution could be viewed.
Thank you, Vance. I appreciate that.
All in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Nancy. I don't think any of us take this lightly, and it's a very challenging subject, but I believe in the sanctity of our Republican democracy, and I don't think any form of invasion of the Capitol is appropriate, and certainly not fanning of flames by other elected officials. So thank you.
Just to comment, one of my concerns on the attack on the Capitol is the, one of the results is it will make in-person dealing with our electoral officials even more difficult, even more security and other buffers in between. I think of the town halls that Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley, Representative DeFazio do on a regular basis. And I am fearful that there may be, once we're able to resume in-person meetings, that they're all, they won't be the same. And I think that's a real loss.
And I guess I'll just, I'll just say too that, you know, I am all for the right to peaceably protest. I've been to my share of protests. And really what my intention here is to condemn is the breaching of the Capitol, the trespassing, the damage, the violence. Those things are, you know, should be condemned.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 8.2, matter of consideration of the appointment of the interim sheriff. As you all know, Sheriff Scott Jackson is stepping down as of February 1, 2021. And with the assistance of a community panel, we interviewed two candidates after putting out a search through our HR department and canvassing for candidates. We interviewed two candidates with the help of our community panel, Captain Don Rogers of the Benton County Sheriff's Office and Under Sheriff Jeff Van Arsdale of Baker County Sheriff's Office. Our purpose today is to select the interim sheriff appointee who will serve out Sheriff Jackson's term. The interim sheriff will then stand for election the next election. And regardless of which candidate we choose, final appointment will be contingent upon a thorough and extensive law enforcement background check, which will likely extend beyond the end of January. Under Sheriff Greg Rindler will serve as the acting sheriff in capacity for a period of time until the appointed sheriff takes office. We have a choice between two well-qualified candidates, Captain Don Rogers, who has an intimate knowledge of past and present Benton County Sheriff's Office practice and deep local roots, and Under Sheriff Jeff Van Arsdale, who is a long-serving Corvallis police officer and has professional experience in Washington County and most recently in Baker County Sheriff's Offices. Our job announcement that these two individuals have responded to clearly stated our interest in obtaining or positioning us for internationally-based Kalia accreditation, increased transparency and focus on community relations, focus on building an inclusive culture based in equity and diversity, and the centrality of achieving our criminal justice system's improvement agenda for facilities and programs based on accountability and treatment to keep people out of jail. So with that background, we know that the interim sheriff will need to provide clear leadership and build strong community relationships to move us forward. So based on the interviews that we have done and feedback from the community, what are your recommendations, Commissioners? Nancy?
I would just like to highlight how difficult of a decision this was. Both candidates had impressive qualifications and backgrounds. I was pleased that we had not one, but two high-caliber applicants. Even though it made it more difficult for the decision, I think that's great for our community to have those options. I thank them for their service. I thank them for the time that they spent preparing and applying and interviewing. And I really thank the citizen panel that assisted us. I think their feedback was very helpful. And ultimately, though, we can only choose one person, so the person that I will be voting for is Mr. Van Arsdale.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah. My comments are similar to what's already been stated, that Benton County is fortunate to have two very strong candidates for consideration. And really, I guess I shouldn't have been surprised, but the amount of feedback we've gotten from our community has really helped in my decision. And I guess one final point is I'm looking for a sheriff who recognizes the importance of communication and engagement with our community. So like, those are my thoughts.
Is there further discussion or are one of you ready to make a motion? And I would seek a motion for a conditional appointment upon an extensive background check and the eligibility of the appointee as a registered elector in Benton County.
All right. I would move to appoint your sheriff, Ben Arsdale, the interim Benton County Sheriff, conditional on meeting the background checks and residency requirements.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you to all candidates, and we really appreciate the very great interest of the Sheriff's Office in this next appointment, and we look forward to working with all of you. And that concludes our business today. All we have left is others.
Well, we also are going to go into exec session following others.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, we will be entering into an executive session at this time, and we'll have to clear the room to do so.